It is now 6:01. I'd like to open up the meeting of the Woodbury Select Board for Monday, May 8th, 2023. So, any adjustments to the Select Board agenda?
I have one. Mike and Darlene Richardson wanted to come and I messed up getting their request in time so they didn't get on the agenda, but I think it would be nice to add them and let them speak early. Maybe 6:05.
Yeah.
We should be done with our other important business.
Yep, that sounds good. Any other adjustments to the Select Board agenda at this point?
Well, under updates and other business, we can talk about the school water. What do we know now?
You want to do that along with school generator repairs needed?
Eh.
Do it at the same time or all the same?
But they aren't really related.
Oh, well, they are in some ways.
They both have a school.
On the top, school generator at 6:30.
Right.
Yeah.
So, let's just do that at the same time.
Okay.
Any other adjustments? So, we're in the midst of approving bills and payroll orders. They'll be finished before, well, they'll be finished after the meeting adjourns pending any discussion. The minutes have been approved as far as I know. Is he? Yes, okay.
Oh, yeah.
The minutes for the April 24th meeting have been approved by signature. I was absent for that meeting, so that just required two signatures. Open for public comments.
I guess this is probably a good place to put it.
Okay.
The MBI trailer down in the comment. We've had lots of inquiries on why it is parked there.
Okay.
And now we need to look into that, how we know whose it is.
Without hearing other public comment, I'd like to recognize Mike or Darlene Richardson for their comments.
Mike Richardson, Ainsworth Road, and wait Darlene. And we came to lodge a complaint with the house on the corner of Ainsworth Road and Route 14. It's obvious that it's being used, I think, to sell some drugs out of. They have a mud pit there. There's cars blocking the road at various times. People coming and going, stopping for a couple of minutes and leaving. And it's just been ongoing for so long and nothing's getting done about it. And I'm just, I mean, the dwelling itself is, I guess, unlivable supposedly. I mean, the state environmental reserve, or environmental.
Ryan.
Ryan McCall, enforcement officer.
Yes.
He stopped up the other day and tried to kind of make peace on behalf of whoever is staying there, but.
Yeah, which is a different person now.
Was trying to make peace with you or with?
Well, he was Tom or Paul. Kind of defending the guy, saying he was a good kid, trying hard, but I really think he's a little misguided because there's a lot of bad stuff going there. And it's just, they're tearing up the road. I mean, they just graded the road and every day somebody pulls in, peels out, up and down. They turn around at Chance Payette's place, peel out, going back down. It's just, it's nuts. And we've been told if we want to do something about it, to call the state police. Well, state police, I think you're kind of busy, but.
It's not the only place in town that the police have been asked to monitor, unfortunately. That could be added to the list, I guess.
I understand that if it's a non-livable dwelling, there are people staying there. So, somebody needs to be made aware of that.
This isn't, no, I don't think there's any definition of non-livable. But like Ryan probably told you, if there's no sewer and water, it is illegal.
Well, people are always there. They're out urinating and defecating right in view of our house.
From my living room door, sitting on my couch, I'm watching all these people pee next to the garage. So, if I have guests, they're watching them pee next to the garage too. Like, come on, really? And we have some video that we would love for you to listen to and one of them to see. Because this is what.
So, the other, last Thursday night, and honestly, I've looked at most of the vehicles that are coming and going in the yard and they're basically have a paper plate taped in the back window and they're not inspected. They're not registered. They're illegal. And so, this, the other day, this guy was going out, turning around before he get to Route 14, right there at the end of the road, and he'd gun it and come flying back up and literally jumped the Jeep into the mud. And it's like.
Over.
Over and over. And then they're just revving their motors and it's disgusting. And is there something we can do about it?
As you know, we took this to court at the request of.
I didn't know you went to court.
Well, it did go to court under our zoning ordinance, which says that uninspected vehicles and miscellaneous junk have to be stored out of view of the public road, and that is a public road.
I will say, they cleaned up the junk vehicles, but now it's just a mud pit.
We went, yeah, well, I noticed last year when they were cleaning up, when they first started cleaning up, I noticed they had scraped a lot of it and I said, oh God, that's going to be muddy in the summer.
Take it right up.
I've been up there lately.
Yeah, it's a beautiful thing.
We went to court, we took it to court. The town spent over $4,000. It's adjudicated now, so it's okay to talk about it in public. But the court did decide that we could close the case with a fine and what comes next? Yeah, I don't know. I mean, the court found that it was a violation and because it took so many months, so many times that the.
Is there currently a lien on the property?
Hmm, I don't think currently.
Yours will be.
There will be?
Yours, the town's will be, that will be a lien against that property.
I do believe it will be, but I don't think you've seen it yet.
So, is that the 4,000? Was it?
Yeah. Oh, okay, oh, good, because I thought they were going to have till July 1st or something like that, no.
I got the paperwork one day last week.
Oh, good, okay, so there is a lien.
Yeah, because Ryan said that he thought there was a 4, that must be the 4,000. He said he thought there was a $4,000 lien on it.
Now, is that a fine or is that?
It is a fine, but if it doesn't get paid, then it becomes a lien and the lien only gets paid if the property is sold. So.
So, we can't buy that property for $1,000, sorry.
It's public knowledge that Tonya Dago is still the owner of the property?
And it is a year, it's delinquent, only by one year.
By one year, so the first year she had it, she didn't pay?
She did pay.
Oh, she did?
The first year it was paid, yes, only one year.
So, if it comes up for sale, I mean, is there, how do you publicly notify people for tax?
My attorney is setting up. I have five parcels right now that have gone to the attorney. He's going to be setting up, he's done the history and the vault. So, he's just going to be bouncing me an email telling me where he's advertising it.
Is that going to be one of them?
No.
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 Not as of now, no.
It has to be, I don't know what the policy is, two or three years behind?
Two years without paying or setting up a payment plan and signing on it. So, yeah, it goes.
If I'd have known it was up for tax sale before, I'd have bought it.
It wasn't up for tax sale.
It wasn't.
It wasn't?
It was not.
It was for sale.
I was told it was.
The mortgage company finally put it up for sale after years of.
And it shouldn't have been.
Because Tim and Steph said the same thing, they would have bought it too.
Sure.
Well, they went up beyond the price that Tim wanted to.
Yes.
Yeah, Tim, you know, just didn't see the sign.
So, anyway, back to the grievance pertaining to today. What can we do? I mean, it's really ridiculous to have to, I mean, the value of that place is really killing the value of my place. So, I mean, if they don't pay their taxes, can you drop mine?
Exactly.
What the heck, you know? I know you hate to hear it, but I mean, I gotta complain to somebody and. You guys are first in line.
Nobody's hearing us.
Well, we do, I mean, we have other places in town where there's lots of traffic in and out and the police have been called over and over and it.
Is that the route I should take? I mean.
We feel like nuisance calling the cops, the state police that, where are they, Middleberry or something?
We know, I know.
For a real sex.
Yeah.
We're in Marineland.
But I mean, it's.
We literally watched on a Friday night, the place had been deserted, a car showed up, was there, they went inside. It was there 10, 15 minutes and then all of a sudden, there's like six or seven cars. Everybody's running in, coming out, getting in their car and leaving. I don't.
Yeah, you know, it's hard. I mean, other places are kind of know what's going on and this is a new one. I didn't, I didn't know whether there were drugs involved. I don't know, I hadn't heard about that.
Well, they're the newest ones at the house, so it's a whole, it's a whole new crowd now.
Well, yeah, it's Tonya's nephew.
And they're young, they're all pretty young. I mean, like I said, there isn't legal vehicle in the yard.
But they're not parked there, right? I did see a new one, I think there was a green one.
All right, so right now, there's one out in the mud pit hung up on a rock and then there's two others parked next to the garage.
But they're not like abandoned. If they're registered, they must be inspected, if they've got a paper plate.
I don't think they're registered. I really don't believe it.
They have a paper plate.
Ryan said we have to cross the road.
These guys get those paper plates you print on your, on your computer at home and they put them in your back window and ride around for months.
I know.
And they're like a five-day, a five-day pay.
So, you're saying that they're not registered? That's something you could report to the police if people are driving around unregistered vehicles. That's dangerous. I mean, that's something that can get picked up with.
And they don't even look inspectable. I mean, they're junk, they're literally pieces of junk.
What did Ryan say to you about whether or not there was any enforcement that the A and R could do?
He said there's, their hands are tied.
And he wants to try to help, he wants to go toward the good with this kid, Thomas, whoever Thomas is. Because apparently there's already a pre-approved loan for $36,000 to help him with water or something.
Yeah, that's not going to happen because he doesn't own the property.
Right, Tonya, Tonya.
If Tonya lives there, they might be able to get.
Ryan suggested to him to get the building, you know, the property in his name, but I don't know.
But that involves, yeah, going to a lawyer and getting the and stuff like that. But these are not people who are good at stuff like that.
So, anyway, I guess we said our piece and.
Hmm. Would you guys be willing to show me the video?
Absolutely.
No, not the second, but.
Oh, I'll show it to you right now, I think you guys might all get a kick out of it.
Probably better if we didn't.
There's like two that I really want you to see.
I would, I would like to see it and then I'm willing to make a formal complaint with the state police on your behalf as the chair of the Select Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because I've been to the bottom of that property a number of times as well and I agree with you all. So, if we can do that offline.
I could send it to you if you want me to send it to your phone or?
Yep, we could do that. Maybe it's better if we just sat down, took a look at it. Now, I'll do it as an independent citizen, but as the chair of the Select Board, I have a little bit more teeth. I'll make the formal complaint with the state police. And can't say it's going to go anywhere because they're really busy. But as long as, as long as we start the process of a record of complaints, maybe we can get some traction.
Awesome.
Does that sound like a reasonable first step?
Very much so.
For you all?
Yes.
All right, and I'll get back in touch with Ryan and see what, what A and R really is thinking. Ryan is unfortunately stretched really thin.
I'm sure he is.
He's really the only person who is doing enforcement.
And he's got a list of, just in Woodbury, he's got.
He's got, as long as his arm, so. So, but I will get back in touch with Ryan about that property as well. Does that seem like a reasonable next step for you all?
Absolutely does.
Okay. So, if you're willing to, my email and everything is available.
Yep.
If you want to send me stuff and we can make a time maybe to just meet.
Okay.
Let's do that. Does that sound like a good plan?
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely does.
That way, we don't hold you guys up forever, but I do want to deal with it.
Appreciate getting us in first, too.
You don't have to be here forever. Do you have any more questions for us though, while we have you?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Appreciate your help.
Of course, yeah, get in touch and we'll, we'll figure out.
All right, awesome. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, everyone.
Appreciate it, thanks for the time. So, we're up for the town clerk's report. Mr. Turkey, do you want to see anything else about what you know about the MBI trailer that's parked in the town comm? I mean, other than the complaints that have been about it?
That's all, I have no idea who, I've heard rumor who the driver is, but I personally have not seen him leave that trailer there.
Do you have more information?
I don't, I just have what she said. She heard that it was Kirk Galan who lives up the other end of the big curve up here and that's probably why he doesn't want to bring it home with him, but.
Well, I can't stay there.
He hasn't asked for permission though.
He's been doing it for a couple of months.
On and off, yeah.
Coming early morning and leaving with it.
But I can't, can't do that. That's not, that's not what the town comm is for.
Because then when it starts to get a little bit warmer, the people in 21 Valley Lake Road are not going to appreciate that trailer being parked there.
But we, but we don't, we don't actually know whose trailer it is. We just have a rumor about whose trailer it is. Okay.
He works for them, it's his trailer.
I've seen, I've seen the, you know, the truck part of the trailer go up my road at least once. And you, where's that guy going with the note?
So. Can you give me contact information? If you would, then I'll, I'll call and be the, I'll be that person.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, yeah.
It's great.
But Ms. Brandy, would you? I appreciate it. Mr. Turkey, I'm sorry I interrupted you, but it's your time for the clerk's report.
Pam has been sending out, she sent out the first notice for the dogs that have not been licensed by the 1st of April. And we're, right now, we're down to 36 from 2020, this current year. As of April 1st, there's 36 dogs left to be licensed. And we're also going to tackle the ones that didn't license from 21 also.
Wow, okay.
And the second notice for those is due to go out on the 11th, which is what, Thursday this week?
Great.
And I have received a information request from Darren and I cannot pronounce his last name. He lives across the street up on the hill.
You soon will.
Okay, and he's the new school board member for the elementary school. And they would like to know the school property, who owns the land? Is it the town?
Yes.
It's the town that owns it. What about where the spring is at this crimmick?
It's a right-of-way.
It's a right-of-way, but we don't know it.
Penny Allen, Penny Reggie Allen own the land.
Because I went back through deeds and I can't find, so it's ours, okay.
Yeah, we have a right-of-way that's been established, but as far as I can tell. But no, we don't own the property.
Okay.
Yeah, they're.
Nor the subsurface rights.
Larry, Larry, there should be a binder, white binder in the vault that has a lot of information on the wellhead protection area.
Okay.
Something in there.
Sorry.
That's okay, I need to get some evidence. Taking out the time to take at that one.
I think it's, oh, I received one more complaint about the condition of the caperow. And I told them that Alfie was in this one and said he was going to grade that on Tuesday.
Tomorrow, it's on the agenda.
Okay, so that's, and you said Brett Meyer, Washington County Sheriff's?
Oh, okay, so.
It's right now, it's tentative for May 22nd.
So, they've put in a request to be on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yes.
I did not understand that they were asking for, I know they just, I thought they wanted to be put on the agenda at our convenience. Okay, yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, can you explain this, Washington County Sheriff's office?
Washington County Sheriff. She told, Robin told us at the last meeting that they had called.
Her.
About coming to a meeting.
Yeah, Brett Meyer.
And she told us that, but, and then they called her today or. She said, are we on the agenda? And she had to say no.
And what, what do they want to talk about? Do we tap any information about what they want?
Well, one of the things is that they want to introduce the new sheriff.
That'd be great.
Because Sam Hill is no longer the sheriff down there.
Right.
He retired.
And maybe we can get some explanation as to why they never fulfill their contract.
Yep, it's like a meet and greet type thing.
Yeah, that'd be great. And I won't try to be too mad about the fact that they don't fulfill their job.
Oh, goodness.
Mrs. Turkey, anything else that you want to bring up?
Nope, I think that is it.
All right, thanks, ma'am. Ms. Brandy, would you, if you wanted to do the town treasurer's report, please?
Yep. Reports, I gave you balance sheet, financial statements, and due-to-do from. Income over the last two weeks, cash receipts, took in $985.30. Delinquencies, $310.97. Swenson quarterly, $7,961.48.
Can you repeat that, Ms. Brandy, 7,000?
And I'm going to pass this along, this is to date what Swenson has given us for deposits, how it's dispersed between the herb, the paving and the highway.
And that's their quarterly?
That was their quarterly amount, which went down, it was kind of, yeah.
So, that would have been for January through March?
Yep. Money market, I transferred $20,000 to pay to cover bills. Payroll was $10,222.23. Accounts payable, $19,754.95. Goodies, and that's not mine to discuss, it's a question.
Could one of you have a copy of the school lease? You could.
The last one I found was 2019.
What?
It's the last one I found.
Oh, geez, I mean, they renegotiated it last year, didn't they? Michael was involved with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, Michael was involved, I should have found one in the office.
We should have one for 21, 22.
Unless he brought it in, we wouldn't have one. We could call the school and ask.
We have to call OSU.
Because it was probably signed at the meeting and then people are there.
At that formal meeting. Which I didn't want to attend. Can we reach out to OSU, please?
Taylor, I don't know if she's on alternative.
And this lease went through 2021.
Right, so we have, we have to have one that's more recent. We at least have to have the 21, 22. And I know that 22, 23 was renegotiated, so we should have two more. We can, we can reach out to Lisa McCarthy. I don't know if she'll have a copy of the lease, but at least she can get us in touch with someone who does because she's the principal of Woodbury and Lakeview. Ms. Brandy, are you willing to?
Is she involved in the lease negotiation?
No, but she can.
I can send an email to Taylor at the front desk and she just bounced me a copy and I can kick it and then store one in my office.
That'd be great.
If you guys want to see one digitally or I can make copies.
A digital copy would be fine.
I'd like to see one, yeah.
I don't need a physical copy, a digital copy would be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brandy. Anything else that you want to address?
No.
Okay, so we're on to school generator repairs. Which is a really significant amount of money.
I guess it would have been nice to ask Larry or Sean to come and explain to us why all of a sudden we need those humongous repairs.
Ms. Brandy, we do have a record of having a service contract with them in years past. Isn't that true?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
But it's just not, they're saying it's not covered?
That, I don't know.
Okay.
I can.
Because it seems like with a service contract, a lot of these things would have been dealt with. I mean, I understand travel time and mileage and labor, okay. But we're looking at a $3,000 bill here for things that should have been covered under a service contract that we paid for. So, I'm really confused as to why we're looking at $3,000 right now.
I don't know.
So, could I have copies? Because some of this is blow before my time. Do you think that you can find copies of our previous service contracts?
Oh, yeah, I have, yeah, those are all saved. It's the in years, it goes back five years, they can.
Yeah, I'll take anything. I'll take anything because I gotta be honest, I just don't, I don't feel like this is fair.
Do we know from now that none of that stuff is covered? Like, did they specifically state that that's all money that we would have to pay separately from the contract?
We don't know until we see the sound check.
Yeah, so there was a, there was a gap.
There what?
In the con, yeah, in our, in our service contract.
Really?
Yep.
They sent, they sent one for the garage, they never sent one for the.
Right, but that was.
So, we had, I had to ask, she was, oh, anyway, that's when she sent it. It was, you know, it was already into, what, three months?
And we signed it for two years, right?
Yeah, we signed a two-year contract, the new one.
So, if there was a gap.
Yeah, but I mean, all this stuff didn't fail over a two-month gap. They actually came out and finally did what they were supposed to be doing, which is really actually go through the unit. The last time I know that they did that was when we were out there together and that's been three years. And none of these problems were identified at that point. So, I'd really love to investigate this a little bit more if you're willing to let me.
Yeah.
So, send, send me whatever you can so I'm armed with that before I go talk to them. Because I'll go in person and try to sort this out. Because this is a lot of money and it's a generator that is already older.
Right.
But it didn't work this year. Didn't work. I mean, school was canceled specifically because the generator was not working functionally with a service contract on it. Didn't work. I mean, school was canceled specifically because the generator was not working functionally with a service contract on it. So they failed in their job. And that should be made clear. And I thought with a new service contract, we would get something out of it, but it wasn't supposed to be a three thousand dollar maintenance bill. Not... Not okay with that.
Okay.
So any information you can give me, I'd love it. And I will go and try to work this out.
I'm gonna loop the new gentleman who's the Larry handed down.
Sounds great.
In the email.
Please.
That way we're all... Yeah.
I'd love to be on the same page.
Okay.
But it's our generator.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate it. While we're on the topic of school, unless we have other comments on generator repairs?
Thank you for understanding that.
All right. Let's deal with, uh, school water and the school well, please.
Did you get that email today?
I haven't read it. Sorry.
I haven't checked my email today either. Here's the folder for that.
All right. Okay, so this is from... Does someone wanna introduce this since I haven't read it all? Anybody? Wanna introduce it?
Oh, I, um...
If you'd rather.
Can I have that back? I did read it. I did read it, but I didn't memorize it. But the, uh, uh, the report was done. Water testing was done by Weston Sampson, I think. On a water bearing. They did a sixty-seven-page report, which I did not print out.
I have it here.
Oh. Did you print it?
No, Ms. Brandy did.
Oh, Brandy should've gave us one. Okay. So it does look like PFAS was found. They did some examination. At first, they looked at the spring box to see if there was possibly anything in the interior of the system that was contributing, and they found that was nothing. So it must be in the groundwater. They're gonna do some additional testing, maybe of some other water sources in the area. And in this letter from, uh, sites management section of the agency of natural resources, they said that based on these results, it is clear that PFAS is entering the spring box from groundwater. Gradient of the spring box, uh, it is based on the sampling results and that the Orleans Southwest Union Elementary School District is the owner-operator of the school water supply, is a potentially responsible party for the PFAS identified in the school water supply. The Vermont PEC requests that OSSU ESD retain the services of qualified engineer, environmental consultant. They could be the same company familiar with water supply issues and PFAS to undertake the following actions. Continue sampling. Immediately initiate sampling of water supplies in the area. They said here a couple times that OSSU ESD is the owner, and I think they might... That might be an issue that the town has to deal with. But there's also possibility that if for any reason OSSU ESD is unwilling or unable to undertake these actions, the state of Vermont, under Title X, Section 1283, may authorize the release of state funds from the Environmental Contingency Fund. And I think we were told at one time that something expensive has to happen, that there might be grant money available.
It's true. That there is potential for grant money, but... Um, not if we don't have a source. And unfortunately, they didn't do any testing other than the well itself. So you can't fix... You can't fix it up without knowing a source.
Is there any for the filtration option?
You can't filter out PFOA.
Okay.
Is there any what?
Filtration.
You can't filter out PFOAs. PFAS and PFOA, you can't filter out. You have to irradiate them. Okay.
So...
Well, that's not good.
I think we need to talk with Mr. Joe Houston again.
Yeah. And I think that we... We had talked about trying to get some grant funding to have a broader sampling plan of other people's groundwater wells. Uh, this is why we brought it up the first time. Because if we don't understand the distribution of PFOA and PFAS, and granted, it's at the... It's basically at the... At the limit. It's right there. But still dangerous enough, especially for, um, children. But we don't understand the distribution of the... Of whatever this plume is. And in that location, there's really no good reason that we should have a PFAS or PFOA plume. Unless it's airborne and generated, which is a lot of places in rural Vermont right now. There... The point sources, you know, we point to sources that are easily identifiable. Wax from the floor, um, manufacturing facilities for coatings. None of that is going to be at that well site.
So will they, um, test some wells upstream?
The idea would be that...
Down?
Well, it's not an upstream-downstream. We're talking about groundwater, so it doesn't work quite like that. But, um, we would... We would have to have a broad sampling regime to understand sort of where it is and where it isn't. If we can identify a plume, then there's something that we can investigate as a source. Otherwise, we're talking about a new well. And...
Would that solve the problem permanently? Like, I know that the... It's in the groundwater now, but will it later go lower into...
No, it won't. Typically, it doesn't... It flows with a... Within a certain horizon, and we have a very shallow well. Um, if we draw... If we... It's just a... It's a seep spring, basically. If you draw, you know, a deeper source well, um...
At that location, it will have to be a different location.
It could be that location. But it's not our property.
Right.
You know, if we're gonna drill a new well, we should probably put it on our own land.
Or buy the property.
Or buy the land.
Buy a piece of...
But, um, let's not go down that road yet until we understand the distribution of the plume. But the reality is that we've got a contaminant that's been identified. It's identified at the source. It's identified in the water at the school. That's enough that I think that we should be able to get some sort of state funding to investigate the plume a little bit more before we move on to the next steps. But, um, this is why I think we should take advantage of the study that OSSU has done and see about potential grant funding.
It said... It says here that the work plan must be prepared and submitted to the WMPD within thirty days of the date of this letter.
Yeah, well, we can submit a...
This is from Joe Houston, so I'm sure he's gonna...
Well, I'll talk to... I can tell it to Joe.
You want this part too, or you want...
Uh, I don't know.
You also copy that?
I might make copies of this and then have it so it's available for everybody else.
So you take that one and I'll make copies?
You sure?
Yeah.
All right. I'll start with Joe. I'll loop everybody in. And, um... Yeah, we'll just... We have to coordinate with them. I mean, if it was on us, we would just go directly to, uh, to looking at grant options. But we can't do that without looping in OSSU, just like with Jenny. Ms. Brandy, if anything else comes to you, would you please let me know? I appreciate that. Start on that tomorrow with Joe. He's usually pretty responsive, so... I'm sorry, I talk a lot with this one, but I do worry about...
Oh, you know what?
I do worry about water. Yeah, I have some sense of it. But, um, any other comments that need to be made about school water, other than the fact that our kids can't drink?
No. My kids are drinking our spring water right now.
I know. They're drinking our spring water too.
Curious to know about that.
I'm curious to know as well. Yeah. We don't have it in our water.
Have you tested for it?
Yeah, we tested for PFAS, uh, two months ago.
That's good to know.
It's just a little bit more. Then you just do the state test.
So would it do any good to be proactive and have our water tested since I'm right up the hill here?
Yeah.
Is that expensive? Or... I mean, will it count if...
Sure.
Toward the...
Yeah, as long as you use the state lab, it counts. But it may be nice if the state paid for it, not you. With an extra couple hundred bucks, so... Let me see what I can find out. 'Cause I would love to just take advantage of this moment and have people test their water. 'Cause this is not part of the normal test that you do, unless you're a school.
Kids that you can call up and say, "Hey, mail me one." It doesn't factor in.
Unfortunately, no. It's a... It's a certain set... It's a certain direction of tests. When you're doing organic phosphates, it's a different testing direction. That is not what we usually test for when you just do a common well water test. Uh, unfortunately. All right. It's on me for now. I'll talk to Joe and start from there. Other comments? School water, PFAS, PFOA?
Thanks for taking charge of that.
Yeah.
Do my best. Um, Mr. Larabee?
Yes.
You down with doing the town road report?
Sure.
All right.
So I received a applicant for highway. And as far as I've got, it's just looking it over. He's got lots of... Lots of experience with all things that we need. So I'm gonna call him and have an interview with him and get more information from him.
Great.
So that's where we stand. There's only one so far. Uh, there's rumor that there's another possibility, but that's all I have right now. So, but I'm gonna act on this one. I wanna... I wanna give him an interview and see what his... The rest of his story is. But because his resume and his application is very impressive.
Awesome.
So if we can make things work.
And even at halftime, he knows...
Well, that's part of... That's one of the questions I need. I don't... That wasn't specified in his application, so...
But it was in the ad.
That will be... Right. So he must've read that.
Yeah.
Or he must be aware of that's what we're offering, so... Yeah, yeah. So, but I'll get more information from him very soon.
Great.
Next on the list is grater shopping.
Just go into the market for some apples.
So, yeah. So Chris, last time you... There was a discussion about whether we should look at... Whether they should look at the used grater that was for... Up for auction at the state garage, so Alfie looked into that?
So I did. It's, uh, two thousand two, which is twenty-one years old. Uh, it's got just under four thousand hours on it, which honestly, for that age, is low hours, but it's still...
Twenty-two years old.
Still twenty-two years old.
Yeah.
And there's no telling what it's gonna go for at auction. You know, if it's thirty thousand, forty thousand, then it's probably a good deal. But if it goes to eighty thousand, ninety thousand, then I'm out. I don't... I'm not... That's not a good deal for us. Mainly because of the age, the chance of running out of ability of arts. I mean, things are going obsolete sooner now than they used to, so that's a fear. I did talk to the sales lady from United, uh, who is hoping to sell us a new grater. And she is... The grater that we... That's available to us is gonna be rented for a month, uh, to another town. So because it didn't sell, they're feeling they can rent it, which is actually in our favor.
It's good, yeah.
Because one, it buys us a little bit more time to decide and find money. And two, it lowers the price a little bit. They'll take... They'll take the money they get for the rental off the asking price.
Would we still be able to get the regular warranty?
Yes. Warranty will be...
Will be intact?
Intact, the same as if it was...
If it was new?
Yeah.
'Cause that was one of the things that we had talked about with buying new in the first place, is that we have some guarantee that we can get parts and service.
Yes, yes.
Which we can't when we buy a used grater.
That will all be in the price.
Okay.
So the price still around four hundred and eight thousand dollars?
That sounds high.
I don't have that in front of me. That seems high to me.
Sounds high.
That's high because that was an estimate amount that I threw in there. Um, as far as the HIRF, what I threw in there for amount, not knowing in three years what a grater's gonna cost us.
It's a three sixty...
About three sixty something.
Well, three sixty-three, that was... Four oh eight was before the trade-in. So three sixty-three is after the trade-in.
Yes, I think that's correct.
Yeah. So, um, should we not bother to look at... Should they not bother to look at the used one anymore? Take that off the table?
I wouldn't waste your time personally.
Okay.
Well, there's a lot of... There's a lot of other roadblocks in the way in place of that, too. The auction is actually this Saturday.
Oh.
Viewing is Friday. I'm going out of town, so I'm not gonna be able to look at it.
This is the state auction down in Berlin?
Yeah, yeah. And they, you know, they said you have to... You have to get your bidder's number ahead of time and let them know about financing. It just seems like for that, it's sort of a rushed deal at this point. And I don't really feel comfortable with it. It is gonna be interesting to see how much it goes for.
Yeah.
Because of the low hours.
It's twenty-two years old.
That's right. That's right.
And twenty-two-year-old gear does not hold up very well, even if you maintain it in Vermont. I just don't think it's worth the time.
And I agree, but I, you know, I said I would look into it.
Thank you for putting it out there.
Yeah, thank you.
Let's... I think we need to focus on how we can... How we can make this purchase from United as well, in terms of where we found the money.
Are we at this point guaranteed to be able to buy it at the end of the mental period if we want it?
There's no real guarantee.
Okay.
I mean, anybody can write a check to own that grater. There's really no guarantee.
Got it.
If we wanted to throw some money down, they probably would hold it for us.
Okay.
But if we're gonna do that, then we might as well just jump in with both feet.
Right.
Well, it's... Yeah, except for the fact that we might not have it. We might have to borrow the cash. So we might not have it all...
Right.
Available right away.
Yeah, there's no way we can buy it outright.
Right, but we've got some... Some. We wouldn't have to borrow the whole amount.
No.
As I understand, we have some part of money and we got some money.
Yeah, we've got the money for the truck that we haven't spent yet.
Right.
We don't wanna... I mean, if we needed to make a down payment or something, that's all.
Leave the truck money alone. Too many more moving parts here.
I think, I wanna speak for Brandy, but you did some research on loans.
Yeah, with me and Dave. She has all the documentation I dropped off last night.
I asked, um, I attended a webinar last week on municipal finance. And the one thing that I... I learned a couple things, but one thing that I was reminded of, and Brandy probably knew this already, is you can't... You can borrow for up to five years without voter approval. If you go more than five years, you... If you go more than five years, you need to go to a special town meeting and have an Australian ballot. So whether or not we can afford to. Brandy had it here like maybe eighty-five thousand dollars a year. Um. For five years. If we put in some hundred thousand dollars in ARPA money, then that brings that down quite a wide, quite a ways. Another couple of years, we're gonna need another truck, so.
Seems like we might wanna get people's opinion though, you know, voter approval for something like that, it's gonna affect everybody's taxes. You know?
Rather significantly.
Yeah, well.
And it'll probably slow the process too, but.
It would slow it down a lot.
Other people should have a say.
What if they say no?
Then they're, the people we're representing, so that means no, right?
You should keep fixing our grader.
The other thing I found.
Less road grading.
And less, less work being done.
Maybe we need to like, you know, if there were to be a meeting, we would have to explain, you know, what happens if we don't get a new grader?
The other thing I learned at that webinar was that even though the town, the voters approve a budget, it is a budget. And at some time, and at some point, the select board has a responsibility to go beyond the budget, because we have a responsibility to do the things that we're responsible to do, like maintain the roads. So if we, if the grader were to break next month and we didn't have a plan for a new one, then we'd have to, uh. Have to.
Name it right there.
Yeah. Go well, well, but when it really breaks.
Well, brass tacks, what do you, what do you think?
That's what I'm afraid of.
Uh, yeah.
It's got twelve thousand.
Hours on it.
Which is a lot. And motor, transmission, that's when they go. We did one for Callis, we did motor and transmission at ten thousand. So with that said, we're, we're, we're two thousand hours above our, our maximum expectancy. So that's why I'm feeling, you know, the pressure of, of doing something while we can get forty-five thousand for the old one. I mean, that's, that's huge money for a thirty odd year old grader. And that might not be available for us next year to, to get
That much.
Forty-five thousand dollars for a grader. I mean, I think, I mean, I'm not trying to push too much, but I, I just think it's only gonna be worse next year if we try to attempt this.
Is it easy to get parts for it now?
Which?
The grader, now?
Uh, the, our existing grader?
Yeah.
They're, they're still available, but I haven't really had to, I haven't needed anything.
Yeah. I just wanted to see if it's still available.
Right. I mean, they're, it's just like anything, some are, some aren't, you know?
So Althea and Brandy put in this request for ARPA funds and here it says help purchase new grader for the town without raising more taxes. Brandy, could you explain that?
Really?
I think that says B R A.
Yeah, we don't have to raise it in the money of the part, in ARPA and after the ARPA discussion of people wanting to spend money, that money on roads.
Spend money on roads.
Asked them what they wanted and they wanted to spend. The biggest issue was roads.
The new truck is paid for. We're taking, uh, up till now, we've been getting ninety thousand dollars a year towards HRF.
Right.
And then it, we, we probably should raise that, maybe not to one-twenty, but some. So if, even if it stayed at ninety, we'd have enough to make these payments.
To make the payments, yeah.
Yeah, without. But even though we still have to borrow.
We still have to borrow.
So that estimate right there for a brand new grader
Mm-hmm.
on that spreadsheet doesn't have, doesn't that wasn't factoring in the trade-in.
Right.
We have right now.
Right.
It's not factoring in, I mean, it in my head, we could have a grader paid off in two years.
If we use ARPA money.
If we use ARPA money.
Right.
And get a loan for two years from Union Bank, it's a done deal.
Hmm.
Um, I'm gonna have roughly around fifty, a little bit over than fifty thousand left over going in, that's in the HRF, that'll be carryover. And then whether it's ninety and then, yeah.
Okay.
Then you're not looking at five years of interest, you're only looking at what we use to borrow. And
Seems like a very good use of ARPA funds to me.
Me too.
And that's what the people.
That's was higher, that was high, the highest thing on the list in the survey. That was generated from the town, so.
So what other questions do we have before deciding that we need and can afford a new grader?
The board has to decide how much they're gonna transfer for next year's budget.
For next year's budget.
Yeah. Well, we have, we'll have to go with what's approved for ninety thousand dollars.
Approaching, approaching or having a discussion with the new owner of Swenson and increasing it.
Well, that's, okay, but we can't.
You don't, being you don't need, I mean, there's cost of living, there's tons of reasons why everything's going up.
That should be.
The raises, the
The fuel.
The fuel running up and down that hill. When they snap, when they can't make it up the hill, I mean, there's and that's gonna be, have to be resurfaced again, just as Chuck said, so it's the the money that we've gotten from Swenson hasn't been increased in over twenty years.
I don't know if that's true, but.
She has the numbers, so.
Oh, really?
I trust Miss Brandy on this one.
Okay, alright, well, good. But really, I mean, that should be done. It should be negotiated, renegotiated, but I don't think that's gonna be able to be factored in to this decision because it's gonna take a while. Yep.
Skip.
How much money from the ARPA funding is available to purchase the grader?
There's a hundred and ninety-seven thousand.
Ninety-seven thousand dollars.
We have other outstanding.
We have other outstanding requests.
Requests.
That's pretty significant.
Which part, the hundred ninety-seven thousand or?
Yeah, hundred ninety-seven.
Yeah.
How about three sixty? Yeah, it's great, except we do have, we do have other, we, we do have other requests that have to be considered.
Considered or prioritized?
Well, prioritize.
I mean.
Not, not top.
Well, it's, it's pretty, I mean, it's pretty difficult to ignore every other request.
Understand.
If you look at, uh, if you look at the amount of money that we budget for town services, the road budget takes up sixty percent.
Understand.
The town general fund takes up twenty percent, the fire department takes up twenty percent. So if we use those percentages, that would mean we have that much money.
Yeah.
But that's a little too much, maybe hundreds.
That's cute.
We have a total of, of other requests.
Yeah.
I'm looking at it right now, I was actually gonna ask if you guys could make sure I'm understanding it right. These, the money's already been allocated for?
Yeah.
Is this right? And these ones, it's still not been decided?
Still not been decided.
Yeah.
Okay. What does this mean? Do you know? I mean.
I did also get a, go ahead. What part was that?
The fire department.
Premium pay for volunteers, that is money that they requested because they did a lot of services on hazard, like hazard pay and didn't didn't have a way to pay their volunteers.
Okay.
And the first two items there would be basically just going into their general fund and I did have a informal conversation with Paul Saruti about whether they might be able to specify something that they need. Because when we give out the ARPA money, we're supposed to kind of, you know, specify what it's gonna be used for, and he did say that they need a bunch of new breathing apparatus.
Mm-hmm.
But he puts, it would be like a hundred and, over a hundred thousand dollars for that. But we could make it less.
So they didn't do the fundraising for two years.
Okay.
And that was a conscious choice on their part.
Mm-hmm.
They spent more money than they had planned to because they did a lot more calls during the pandemic.
Mm-hmm.
This was just personal protective, right? And then this is hazard pay essentially.
Um, just speaking as a property taxpayer, I know where I would like to see well, I know this isn't like tax money, but I know where I'd like to see my tax money not have to go and that I would rather have the roads taken care of than most of these other things.
Yeah, the town building stuff, we didn't have any really firm numbers when we started, but we do and I don't know how committed the town is to the whole idea of winterizing the town hall, but there is stuff that has to be done like even when I put that money in, we didn't even know about the foundation issue in the back.
Uh-huh.
And we do need to replace the north side of the roof before that becomes a problem, but.
But, um, does that all have to, I mean, could that come from somewhere else in the future besides ARPA funds?
It could come out of general funds. We, we could request taxpayer approval in a future budget.
Mm-hmm.
But it would be nice to at least do some of those things this year, the the foundation sinking in and in my opinion.
Yeah, I guess like for me, priority wise, like it seems like the roads would take precedence and all the other stuff. Be great if we could do it, but, um.
I don't have my calculator. But if we have two, let's see, what was that, three, what was that number that just came up? Three hundred and sixty-three dollars with interest might come up to. Well, did that include the extent, it did include the extended, no, the wing was twenty-five thousand. Extended, uh, trailer ones. Let me make sure, oh, okay. It does include the extended warranty, I guess. Zero? Is that possible? I guess it's just part of the, part of the whole price, I guess. Three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars.
Minus the forty-five.
Yeah. No. Plus the twenty-five. And then minus the forty-five, twenty-five for the wing.
It's the wing.
Yeah. Yeah.
Which is necessary.
Yeah.
It's kind of no point, yeah, it's kind of no point adding it.
Could probably go, you know, buy it later. But it's best to just buy it all together and it's put together at one time.
Yeah, that would make sense.
Alright, well, can we try to make a decision? Please?
I think that would be nice. So, um.
I mean, I think I hear what Lizzy's saying.
Yeah.
Which is that ARPA is a good use of funds.
I'd put it all.
Started.
You, you give it all?
I think so. Seems like the most crucial thing.
Hmm.
It's a high priority of the people who, um.
Well, it's not really gonna kind of be a slam to the fire department if we don't give them anything.
But if you don't get a grader, then the fire department can't get open the ropes to get where they need to be, so. It'd be a win-win, I'd say.
Yeah.
I mean, ARPA's sort of a windfall anyway, right? Like it wasn't expected money, so if they don't get it, it's not, like they're losing something that they'd anticipated.
Skip.
Yeah, just a quick question. What other, uh, what other persons or entities are on the auction?
There's a.
Is that on the website anywhere?
I don't know. There might have been, but I don't know.
I think it was at some point.
They did a, um, special meeting one time and we went through all and I put together.
Just curious, what else is on there?
Um, digitization of land records uh, for twenty-five thousand dollars. Town office insulation work for approximately sixty-eight hundred dollars. Town hall weatherization and maintenance for about thirty thousand dollars. Uh, a commercial tent for four thousand dollars.
He wasn't real serious about that.
Yeah, but it was a nice option. WS fundraising, lost revenue for eight hundred dollars. Uh, Woodbury Community Library, lost fundraising revenue for ten thousand dollars. Uh, and then the fire department has a series of things that they requested. Lost revenue from fundraising that totals to about twenty-three thousand. Under budgeting during the pandemic for the calls they did for about seventeen thousand. Uh, personal protective devices for three hundred seventy dollars and then premium pay hazard pay for volunteers during the pandemic at seventy-two thousand dollars, so their total request was around a hundred and twelve thousand. Um, and I will be honest that they were the first ones to submit the requests. And it was a fairly detailed request when they submitted it. So I do feel like they ought to get some recognition for their service. The others are, I think, somewhat ancillary. WS has done fairly well with recent fundraising.
Yeah, they, and also the.
They're not behind anymore.
Library, um.
Has also done fairly well.
Yeah, they got an extra four thousand dollars just in their budget this past year. So you think WES is doing well with their own fundraising?
I think they're doing quite reasonably well. Wouldn't say it's fantastic.
I wouldn't mind giving them a thousand dollars, but.
I'm in the group and I, I'm not, um, saying that we couldn't use money, but.
What, I'm sorry?
I'm in the group, the WES group, and not to say that we can't use money, but again, as a taxpayer, I'd rather see fewer of my taxes, um, have to go up and, um, we can fundraise and make money elsewhere.
Mm-hmm.
So I'll make a motion to direct a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of ARPA funds towards the purchase of a new grader.
I'll second that.
Lizzy, what do you think?
I think we could go higher, but, um, if that's what you guys.
You can do a.
You can, you can, let's, 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 let's go higher. If that's something you like to do.
One fifty maybe? One fifty for the fire department or forty-seven, whatever?
Sold one fifty?
Sold for one fifty.
What?
Sold for one fifty.
One hundred, one seventy-five.
See, you should go to the auction. Uh, so we have an amended motion for, um, distributing a hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward the purchase of a new grader from ARPA funds. Uh, may I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Well, I guess I.
Please.
How can she second her one fifty?
Well, I have a motion.
Sort of withdrawn.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Or amended.
I wanna make sure it's legal.
No, it's totally good.
Well, um, I guess I'd like to make a motion to give forty thousand dollars to the fire department for whatever they need. And then there'll be another little bit left for some other.
That's right, I'll second that motion for forty thousand dollars to the Woodbury Fire Department. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Leaves us with a little bit of trailer that we can throw around to a couple of other small projects.
Yeah, so, so does that mean we're gonna?
We still have to go to United Bank.
But we, now we have to decide to buy the grader.
Yes, we do. Now that we have some money.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we buy the grader. Buy a new grader from, uh, let's see, where'd it go? United. I just had it here.
It's United equipment, right?
Yeah. For three hundred, oh, here it is. Three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars.
Is that, is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second, I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right.
Cool.
So.
So we'll finance it for less than five years. And the voters will be happy because it won't raise their taxes.
So now we have to give you some money to throw at them to see if we can actually guarantee the sale.
That was my question, I don't know, I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna see her Wednesday.
Great.
At the equipment show.
You wanna bring a check?
There's a possibility that I could, I do, that would be great. But no, there's a possibility that I could, I could railroad that rental. Because it's not, I don't know that they've signed contract with that, for that rental.
Oh, yeah.
But that would mean we'd have to have the full amount right away, because they're not, you know, most likely that's not gonna happen that fast, I don't think, right?
What, it's getting the money? Well, we could certainly get a separate twenty thousand dollars or something like that for, to hold it until we can do the.
But we still have to talk to the bank. About our loan.
Randy's pretty confident that.
They're like on it, but she's already called me twice going now. So we're good as far as, yeah, she'll just. So maybe I will go.
To the equipment show?
Yeah.
You should go.
Yeah, that's totally fun. Where is it?
BOR.
Oh, BOR, really, okay.
Everybody wants to go.
Yeah.
It's cool, lots of big, cool shiny stuff.
Yeah. So you wanna bring her a check?
I think I should have a check in hand.
You wanna give him a check for twenty thousand dollars?
Make it out to United, no, don't make it to me.
No. We've been down the track.
Maybe they'll even have it there and you can drive it home.
Yeah, well, it's there, it's gonna be there.
Oh, really?
It's gonna be there, yeah.
Yeah, so it depends on what kind of commitment they made on this rental.
Right, right.
We don't own a low boy to bring it home, so.
So the board is in agreement to have a check cut in the amount of twenty thousand.
To, to secure the purchase.
United Construction and Forestry. You want us to come in and sign an order?
No.
Okay, this is good enough?
It was approved.
All right.
You'll still have to sign it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank goodness. Okay, well, I feel better about getting that process going. Yeah. I feel better. Have to admit. I took my kids to visit grandparents in Florida while they were on their spring break. And then had to go to Mexico and I spent a lot of time around heavy equipment that is pretty damn old. In a desert climate. And boy, does it look great.
No salt.
No salt.
Maybe we should look at Mexico for a grader.
You had to go to Mexico with your kids?
No, they hung out in Florida.
They stayed in Florida.
Yeah, they hung out in Florida.
They were on a job?
I was on a job.
Oh, dear.
But it's funny what our climate does to equipment. Our climate just, man, it's, you know, we have, just have a tough climate for that kind of gear. So, I, but I feel much better about this and I think the townspeople are gonna feel great about having a reliable grader.
I mean, we've been talking about it for.
Decades.
Yeah, years, if not months, if not years, and if anybody wanted to speak up and, and say, don't buy a grader, they probably had opportunity to do that.
I think so.
I mean, it would've been nice to have it in the budget, but we, we didn't get to that.
All right, let's push on.
And it actually doesn't have to be in the budget because it's coming from her.
Mostly from her for ARPA.
We're allowed to spend it.
Uh, Mr. Larry, do you wanna tell us about how Greg's doing?
Uh, we haven't really talked to him about his condition uh, exactly, but he's up and about, he's getting around. It seems like things are going well.
Great.
The girls may be able to tell more about that, um, but.
He was pretty excited to get his staple, twenty-one staples out of his pack the other day.
Oh, yeah?
He's moving good and he's got a smile on his face, so.
So is the pain, he's not in as much pain, hopefully?
He said, yeah, he said that the, the numbness of his legs is completely gone.
Wow, nice.
So it seems like it might've been successful. That's wonderful.
Great.
Great.
So we had a discussion at the last meeting about apron washing.
But the fire department has, we've typically leaned on the fire department to help us with that.
Well, yeah, it, in the past, I think that has happened, but um, when it came up last week, Chuck and Ken both um, suggested it, because I didn't open my mouth too enough. And it was kind of contentious because, well, Paul's only response was, he doesn't feel the need, that, that it's right to put that additional work hours, unpaid work hours, on his um, volunteers, on the volunteers. So I did ask him if it was possible that maybe we could get um, Tim to, and Alfie to work on a deal where they borrow the equipment and Tim could run it and during the workday and get paid. And if somebody else needs to work with him, is that a two-person job or?
I presume so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I actually sensed the meeting, had to talk to Paul.
Oh.
And he is open to that discussion, to letting us use his equipment and us doing it on town time.
Yeah.
So that's, that, I'm pretty sure that issue can be dissolved very quickly.
And it should not really involve us.
Right, yeah, I mean, Paul and I can work that out.
That's just great.
Right.
Just, you know, I think there was, like you said, contention in the room. It just, it didn't simmer.
Yeah.
So, but I have talked to Paul and um, also about them borrowing our trucks. If I wanted to see who's driving the trucks when they're doing it and all of that stuff. And also where the stuff's going, that's important too.
Right.
Because essentially, the highway trucks are carrying that material. If it's going somewhere that's not sufficient.
Right.
That could be.
That could be a problem for us.
So I wanna also be.
Look at the sites?
Look at the sites and make sure that they're, you know, not gonna get us in trouble. So, but Paul and I will work on that. It doesn't sound like it's happening, it sounds like it's gonna happen soon, but I haven't heard back when. So I don't think it's gonna be this weekend, hopefully not.
She's not gonna be around.
That's a little soon.
Okay.
But anyway, I think as far as the, the contention between fire trucks and town trucks, um, we're gonna work that out.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, well, we've dealt with our road grader purchase and how to finance it, that's good. We don't have any new ARPA applications as far as I know.
No, no.
Um, and we have reallocated some funds for the fire department based on our vote. That leaves us with a little bit of money that we can talk about. In case, because we still could receive new applications technically.
Or there are other ones that we haven't addressed.
We haven't addressed. Okay. We have personnel policy on here. I'm not ready. I gotta be honest, I'm not.
Well, you made us promise last, that we'd be ready last time and we both read the thing.
Well, I've read it.
I read it in notes.
Whoa.
But we can wait if you.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm actually, I actually, I, are you reading?
I read it, but it was like two weeks ago.
It's up to you all. We can address it now or we can promise that we will, uh, promise we'll do it at the next meeting. It's, it's, it really is up to you all.
I think I.
Because I was, I, I, I'm the one who was not present at the last meeting, so.
And we decided because you um, had the history that, you know, we shouldn't do it without you. You knew, I mean, you went through it so many times before.
That's true.
You're.
I've been through it a lot.
Shall we postpone? Do it next time?
Let's postpone. And make sure that it's on the agenda for next meeting. And let's put it at the top and make everybody else suffer.
Okay.
We'll go through it faster if we put it at the top. So let's have that for the, what is that gonna be, the? Twenty, twenty seconds, right? All right.
Read it again.
Read it again. Read it again. All right. Updates another business, um, Mr. Lizzy. Would you like to introduce the large animal policy?
I'd like to introduce it. Who's got a question?
It's an invitation.
It's an invitation to do something that you don't wanna do, but.
Okay, yeah, I know.
Yes, it was.
I was prepared for this all day.
No, I know she did this one.
So when I was last on this select board, we had an instance where two horses were killed on Route fourteen. They were found in a pickup truck and they were, you know, dead. So with that prompted us to put together a large domestic animal ordinance. And utilizing resources in the region of cities and towns, territories, and our town attorney, who at that time is Paul Gillies, we put together this draft ordinance. And that is, I guess, sat in the archives since I was last on the board, so.
Before my time, before any of our time.
So anyhow, you know, it passed muster back in twenty seventeen, so I'm not certain whether or not the statutes may have changed since then. I would probably think not, but anyhow, it'd be something to look at.
Okay.
Did you compare it to the gallows one?
No. The short answer is no, why would I do that?
Because they had one that went to court and it was successful, except for a couple of changes that they have since proposed to make. And so it didn't mean the fact that it went to court was.
Well, it was put together fairly recent too.
Yeah.
So it would have all the new statutes.
Right, yeah.
It's a statute in fact, it changed. So I could look at that and if someone would send me the latest.
Ah, I can forward it to you, Skip. I can forward it to you, because they forwarded it to us. Hoping for us to act on it.
Well, yeah, there is another one you should consider acting on too. And it's another one that's sat language since.
Is this a domestic?
I left the board. It's a domestic pet nuisance control ordinance, which deals with uh, dogs, cats, especially cats, wolf hybrid, things like that. And so this is, in twenty seventeen, it was written per the statutes back in twenty seventeen. So this was written because of someone on Route fourteen. It was vicious dogs that were crossing Route fourteen and attacking people. So with that, we rewrote this ordinance and our town attorney, again, back then was Paul Gillies, and he sent a letter to the owner of the dogs. And they were successful in mediating that issue. And so the dogs were kept within the premise. So I have a copy of that here too.
Excellent, okay.
Cell phones, is this different from the one we already have in place?
This one, which one?
The, the, the dog one.
Oh, the dog one, well, it's up to date. It, it deals with stray dogs, not only just nuisance dogs, but it deals with strays. Because the original ordinance was written, if I can read this, in two thousand and it hadn't been updated until twenty seventeen. So it has a few more paragraphs in it and it has updated statutes, statutes. So, you know, without looking at it to make sure the statutes are still viable, so applicable, then uh, you know, they took a look at it and see what you think.
Okay.
Thank you.
And there's also, I think I sent it to you folks these, back in January. And there's a way to adopt an ordinance, I'm sure your folks know that. There are specific uh, ways to do that, you know, where you have to post the ordinance, where to post it.
Where to post it.
How many meetings you have to have to make sure the ordinance is adopted properly. And without that, a proper adoption, the ordinance is.
Is, yeah.
So that's attached to the domestic pet nuisance.
And is there any chance you'd be willing to run that process for us?
Which process is that?
Getting the ordinance adopted, doing the notices and having the meet, telling us about the meetings and things like that?
I can set that up, but it's up to the select board, the statute, it says the select.
It has, it has to be asked.
Well, we, no, we already agreed at the first time we, you know, several weeks, several meetings ago, we agreed to go forward with the large animal ordinance.
Okay.
But we haven't done any of it because other things.
Well, you know, I could certainly lay out a timeline. And if you wanted to do them both in the same meeting, I don't see why you wouldn't be able to.
Do them both at the same time?
Both at the same time. Don't see why not, as long as it's one properly. So I could set up a timeline, I don't know what your schedules are.
Second Monday of, second and fourth Monday.
Well, I think, I believe there has to be a special meeting.
There has to be a special meeting after.
It cannot be part of your.
Regular agenda.
Really?
No. Well, we've, at terms of adoption history, um, the agenda item at regular select board meeting is held today. If we move forward. Read and approved at regular select board meeting on and entered in minutes of the meeting which were approved on. Could also be this meeting. Then we have to post it, but we still have a draft.
Was it really an agenda item today? I mean, it was.
It is on our agenda, large animal policy. But we haven't posted it and we still have a draft, which we have not reviewed.
So it really comes to.
So we really can't do anything until we review it. It's not a draft. So.
But it says right here, read and approved, read and approved at the regular select board meeting on blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
But it doesn't say, where does it say we have to have a special meeting?
What was the date? Because I don't think I was at that meeting, maybe that was before I started?
Maybe not.
Okay, so this is.
We'll figure it out.
This is, this is what, this is what we're gonna do. Skip, would you come back in two weeks after we've had time to read this?
Thank you.
Does that sound reasonable? We'll even put you before the personnel policy.
When I tell people on roads, not everyone could be first.
But would you send that along to all three of us?
Yeah. I'll send this later out from Paul Gillies. Because not only does it deal, it dealt with someone on Route fourteen who had vicious dogs, but it's also applicable to someone who has vicious dogs up on Oak.
On Oak Court Road.
And this is the perfect framework to get that person to make sure those dogs are.
Contained?
Kept properly. So anyhow, two weeks, so what's your expectation in two weeks?
That we will have read this, um, that, I mean, I think that between the three of us, we can probably cross-reference and make sure that the statutes are still applicable. Then we'll have a formal, we can formally approve it.
Research on ordinances and how they're properly worn.
That would be great, if you don't mind doing that. And then when we come back together on the twenty-second, then we can have the first formal approval.
Okay.
Having read it. And then we can post it. Sound okay?
It's okay, I'll be here in two weeks, but I'm just wondering, I'll, I'll look at the timeline in terms of formal approval.
Well, I mean.
To make sure that.
The only thing that we can do at that next meeting, to be honest, is we can start, we can start this process. We can start. We can start with item one. That's the best we can possibly do.
What do we do? And if you find any changes that are required in terms of statute, let me know and I can change this.
Modify the draft.
And I'll, I'll change the dates at least on these because, you know, one of them says a measure that adopted in twenty-seventeen.
Didn't happen, as far as I know.
It didn't.
And one of them says Michael Gregg, Ira Well and Thomas Lindsay.
Three dubious characters.
Good thing we got rid of it, huh? Well, thank you. I'm sorry I couldn't, I lost track of this and thank you for rescinding it. And thank you for copying, Rob, and I still would prefer to read things on paper than on the screen.
Can I go now?
More exciting things to come.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, I really want to know how.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. And if I run across anything in terms of adoption of these ordinances that seem out of line with what we want to do, I'll let you know.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
And we'll do, and we'll do the same.
Okay.
I'll send things to you if I run into them. Thank you, Skip.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. All right.
So.
Man, those acronyms are really getting good.
We talked about this a little at the last meeting. Chris and I was concerned that you, well, I'll bring done with now, I guess, but you had said you thought there were gonna be other resources for money for, um, energy improvements in the build, in the town buildings. And I didn't know if you were maybe talking about this municipal energy resilience program, but.
That's one of the ones I was talking about.
I did. I really don't think it's gonna help us at all.
It doesn't help. I looked at it as well.
Too much, too much stuff, too much.
There's a lot of, uh, stipulation.
Right, and there's a, plus, plus it's gonna be ranked as, and the projects we have are not like big energy savers. If we winterize the town hall, we'll probably use more energy rather than less.
Well, because they'll actually be using the building.
Right, I mean, that's, that's a good goal, but it's not an energy-saving goal. Okay, so Nichols Dam Road again, we, uh, didn't get the letter from our attorney yet, so I'll have some more to talk about that under executive session. Cranberry Meadow update, just another step in the process that we're moving towards a, um, closing sometime this month. There were no responses, nobody requested a special meeting based on the required notice that was posted. That's the thing. So I guess I would make a motion that we go into an exes, executive session.
I will second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, based on DSA three one three A one E, we are now in executive, executive session for the Woodbury Select Board.